President's Services and Public Engagement Committee meeting of Medford City Council. Clerk Lee, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan.
Present.
Counselor Lozaro.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang.
Present.
Present. Resolution 24015 offered by Counselor Sang. Resolution to discuss modernizing city council communication and outreach strategy. Believe the only point on this was the discussion of the social media policy draft, which was drafted, which was submitted by Counselor Lozaro. Counselor, do you have a... Take it away. Do you have anything to present?
Yes, so I am happy to hear any thoughts on this. It's truly just a draft. One thing I actually did want to consider adding that just came to me today was that we should mention, this is sort of an assumption, but it's probably best to include it in writing, is that in an effort to be proactive about our compliance with open meeting law, just to put in the policy that we would make sure not to have any counselors, not to have a quorum of counselors replying on a thread on social media, because that could constitute an open meeting law violation. But that doesn't, it doesn't totally apply to what we would be talking about here, but it might help to just have it in the guidelines. So that could be one amendment we can add to it. But what this, what this basically outlines is that the, we could create social media accounts for the major social media, like Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, X, I guess, not Twitter. And we could have it be a city council... I don't have a Twitter. I don't know. So it could be a city council specific account, like the mayor's office has, a mayor's office specific account, but that doesn't cover city council specific business. And this way, we could share it, things that are applicable to our work. Notifications about important meetings that might be coming up, or listening sessions, which we'll talk about later in this meeting, that kind of thing. And this is just some broad guidelines about how those accounts would be handled. So I'm happy to make any adjustments, but this is just a starting point.
Any other counselors? Counselor Callahan.
I'll just say I did read through the whole thing. It seems pretty comprehensive. I don't, I don't see any glaring omissions or anything that I would change at this moment.
Counselor Sang.
I wanted to thank you, Counselor Lozaro, for working on this. I know I had, you know, this was previously on my docket of to-do, of my long to-do list, and you volunteered to take it off my list. So that was very, very helpful. I'm, I think, very ecstatic to see that this is so comprehensive. I think it's very well done. I, the, you know, the nuggets that I thought were particularly important legal language to put in are, that language is in there, is in this draft. So I think this is very helpful. I think it's very clear, which is what we need if we are to have a social media account. So thank you for your work.
All right. Any, any comments from any of the counselors? Any comments from members of the public on this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Do we... I don't particularly have any comments on this. The draft looks good. I'd like to thank Counselor Lozaro for her work on this. Just a question of procedure. So would we want, Counselor Lozaro, it sounds like you had some recommended edits for it, so would...
Yes, so I, I would suggest that we would add, maybe in the... Maybe at the, at the end of the guide, the last section, Guidelines for Official Medford City Council Use, add a, add a bullet point that says, no, a quorum of city counselors shall not comment on a thread on social media, which would constitute an open meeting law violation.
Okay. Counselor Callahan?
I'm not convinced that that is accurate, and I don't want to put that in here in case it is not accurate. I think open meeting law is open meeting law, and we don't need to write our interpretation of open meeting law into this document, is what I would say.
I, that's fine with me. I'm, I'm sort of being overzealous about it, so I'm comfortable with not.
I mean, it is my understanding that like, I, as a city counselor, can post whatever I want on X. Like I can say my opinion on X, and it doesn't mean that other city councils cannot also state their opinions on, and I have X, I actually mean X Twitter. Talking about the actual thing, not like a thing with the letter, not the algebra. So this is why I'm concerned, because if we're putting into this some interpretation of open meeting law that I think may not be applicable, and it doesn't really matter whether I'm right or wrong, it just, I think, matters whether we are 100% legally sure that that is in fact accurate. Even if it's accurate, we already have open meeting law. I don't know. I just feel like it might be not necessary and potentially inaccurate.
Plus, neither of us being lawyers, it's not really our business to interpret the law yet. Here we are. Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so Counselor Sang.
I would concur with Counselor Callahan. My understa-, I think we have a similar understanding of open meeting law, and I would be worried that something like that would constrain what we can say. And, you know, oftentimes residents do want to hear from most, if not all of us, on an issue. As long as we're not debating it, it should be fine. I'm also thinking the circumstances in which, you know, maybe we share something about a city event that will happen, and, you know, there are people asking what time or what place that will be. You know, and let's just say in a given five minutes, like, just four of us choose to respond to that. I don't want that to have, to be a problem as well. Also, given the fact that I think most of our postings will be retrospectives on what we have already done, I don't think OML is necessarily applicable in that situation. And so I, I think open, open meeting law stands for itself. That obviously overrides everything. And so as long as we follow the law itself, we should be fine without having to hamstring ourselves unnecessarily.
Thank you. Comments from any of the counselors? Do we have any motions on the floor? Counsel Callahan?
I move to approve the social media guidelines.
And refer it favorably out of committee?
I'm sorry? Refer it out of committee?
Good. Second. Okay, the motion from Counselor Callahan to approve the paper favorably out of committee, seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Clerk, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan?
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro?
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli? Counselor Sang?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Motion for the affirmative, one no, motion passes. Just gonna stop sharing my screen. Resolution 24-069. Resolution to discuss a modernization of the Human Rights Commission's Enabling Ordinance offered by Counselor Sang. Do we... Counselor Sang, take it away.
Thank you so much. I have some slides to share, but before I start, I wanted to preface that this is the beginning of a process. I'm not expecting that will pass anything tonight. This is, you know, this will take a few months to work on, and I want to make sure that we're doing it comprehensively. I know many of you are seeing this draft for the first time today or over the weekend. I'm not really sure when it was sent out to folks. And I want to make sure that people have the time they need to digest everything. And so today, what I'm going to do today is give people context about why residents have reached out to me about initiating this process, and to also give a cursory glance at a proposal that I'm putting out that addresses a lot of those concerns. So with that being said, and I believe there are residents here to speak in favor of some reforms as well. But with that being said, let me do this quick, quick PowerPoint that walks through the draft that you have in front of you guys. And so I just wanted to, again, give context for, for why, why modernize this ordinance, walk quickly section by section to give you a quick introduction of how the structure is, and propose some motions to moving forward. So from talking to current and previous human rights commissioners, there have been a number of issues, actually quite a litany of issues that have come up with how the ordinance is drafted. A lot of it stemming from the fact that this ordinance uses language for HRCs that date back decades, whereas, you know, the needs of communities have changed in the last few decades as well. The first big thing that's more procedural is just unclear language that constricts the HRC's work. Two very glaring examples are, in the current draft, it says that there, there must be 10 meetings held, but it's not entirely clear whether you can hold more than 10 meetings. And given the amount of work the HRC is tasked with doing, and the amount of time that the HRC has to hold one, a single meeting, oftentimes the work doesn't get done. And so a lot of commissioners have reached out to me saying that they would like more time to work on issues. And, you know, with the language that's currently in there, it's not clear. It's, you know, some lawyers' understandings that they can, some lawyers' understandings that they cannot. And so we need to clarify that language. This, the other big glaring procedural problem is the quorum for meetings. We've been finding it very difficult to fill HRC seats, partially because our retention rate is very low, and a lot of commissioners are leaving in the middle of their terms. But with that being said, without being at max members, the way that the, or current ordinance is written is that they need, I believe, five members to, to call a meeting, to, to form quorum. And oftentimes, they're not at that because they only have six or seven members. I believe there's one new commissioner there. And so just as long as one or two of them are absent, meetings cannot be held, and that really hamstrings the HRC's ability to do work. I think the, the next big bucket, which I've heard a lot from previous commissioners, and is a very big problem when it comes to retention, is just the duties that are assigned to the HRC, and the interpretation of whether the HRC can do, do things beyond that duty that fulfill the purpose of the HRC. So in other words, in the current ordinance, there's a purpose section. And, you know, there are a lot of things that the HRC could be doing that fulfill that purpose section. So, you know, there is a legal argument that they can do that. But also, there, there's a duty section as well that's very restrictive and really strongly focuses on housing discrimination and enforcing decisions in housing discrimination cases. And that obviously is one subset of what the HRC could be doing. A lot of what the HRC currently, you know, what they're hearing from residents that they want to do, it falls outside of housing discrimination. And on top of that, a lot of HRC members don't feel equipped to deal with housing discrimination issues because they're not lawyers, and because these are very deep, complex legal issues. I, the other two points I basically covered within that. I think the third major thing is just some additional concerns more generally. The commission has not been historically the most diverse. A lot of that is due to structural parts of this ordinance. There's, as we've delved into the youth commission ordinance and the gender equity ordinance in a last city council term, these are ideas from, Counselor Scarpelli is one of our advocates, Counselor Knight, Counselor Morel, they've been leaders on those issues. It became clear to us that there's a need to rethink the organizational structure of the HRC in context with those organizations as well. And hearing from city staff, there's a very strong desire to have members of those commissions, at least one member of those commissions, sit on the HRC as well. So we need to enable that in some way. There's also been a lack of a chair in, in the HRC for many months. The current ordinance says that the chair has to be elected in June, and that means for the last few months, there has, I believe, there has been no chair. And on top of that, there's a question of resources. The city is expecting that the HRC throws a lot of city events, like the Lunar New Year celebration, Black History Month celebrations, Juneteenth celebrations. A lot of that money is currently coming out of the DEI budget, which is fine, but it really hamstrings the HRC's ability to decide which events to hold. And it, the current process is just much more bureaucratic and less democratic. Now, going, I think all that context is really important, so that's why I went more slower through it. These next few sections, I've just basically separated out the ordinance into different sections. So the establishment and purpose, largely, this is largely the same as the current ordinance. We eventually may need to make some small updates, but that really depends on a duty section later on and what we put in there. And so I didn't want to touch it for now. The next section is about membership, appointments, terms, removal, and organization. For context, I worked on this ordinance draft with, with previous HRC commissioners and residents who have worked really closely with the HRC, community groups that have worked really closely with the HRC to get the work they need done. And, you know, this draft is a product of that, of working with them, and I, to make sure, you know, this is responsive to the needs. And I wanted to bring this before the council in an introductory manner, because in, in the air of transparency. Essentially, there's a desire to slightly expand the HRC, but to, but to do so basically by working more closely with existing city commissions, new proposed city commissions, and community-based organizations, some, some of which, the examples of our Disabilities Commission, the Council on Aging. If we create a youth commission or a gender equity commission, members of those commissions, community groups like the West Medford Community Center, different religious groups, possibly, housing-related groups, MHA, for example. And so instead of, because, because we know that there's a problem with recruiting right now, this, you know, there might be a fear that we're expanding, but much of the expansion comes from existing groups. Now, do, we also recognize that we need to increase diversity, and that's why there's language in here about creating a rotation of commissioners and leadership, and providing stipends, all of which are things that studies have proven to work at the municipal level for increasing diversity, income-wise, gender, race, class, everything, profession-wise, on municipal boards and commissions. There's language in here about, that's equity-focused, about receiving training on meeting operation and parliamentary procedure. These are things that often scare away folks who aren't as experienced with city government from working in city government or on boards and commissions. And, you know, that would be something very simple, like a half-hour module at the start of a HRC term. There's also language. I, I think I've basically covered everything. Everything I, everything that I haven't covered is essentially just aligning the HRC with current city commission ordinances that we have for other commissions. So just language that wasn't put in there in the first place, but since we've passed that, we've started to put in every, the city council has started to put in every commission ordinance. The next section, as I talked about quite a lot previously, that there's a problem with meetings and quorums. Again, so this aligns the HRC with most city commission ordinances. It addresses those problems with scheduling and quorums, and it allows for some flexibility. The 10-meeting-per-year thing, that's to ensure regularity of meetings to make sure the commission is doing its work. But though this next sentence basically gives the commission flexibility to have more meetings to finish that work. This next section about, about independence, resources, council, this is, a lot of this language is actually just taken from the current ordinance, but there is some additional language in here about addressing the resource problem. Essentially, this is something that the previous iteration of this committee that worked on the youth commission and the gender equity commission ordinances, which haven't been passed yet, this is language that they approved of when it came to creating a small budget line item for them. This is basically just to let them hold events like the Lunar New Year celebration and stuff like that. I think this will require some talking with the city administration to see how we divvy up between the HRC and between the DEI office. But I imagine the funds would basically be under the same umbrella, and so we're not really increasing funds per se to the HRC. We're just redistributing to give them a little bit more easy of a time, easier of a time to spend those funds. Whereas right now, it's, again, quite bureaucratic. This is the longest section, but it is the last section. The roles, powers, and duty section. Again, much of the current ordinance focuses on housing discrimination. This addresses that. Now, I think this is the section that maybe we would want to read through and edit the most. Again, I'm not expecting anything to change today or anything to be passed today. I want to give counselors and commissioners the time to read this and reflect and give written feedback on it. But this comes out of a lot of work that I've done, talking to, that I've done with previous commissioners and community members that have worked with the HRC about what types of powers and duties they would like to see explicitly laid out. A lot of, again, actually, most of this language comes from neighboring municipalities' HRC ordinances. It also removes duties that commissioners have articulated that they don't, they aren't qualified to do. Again, the current ordinance really expects them to do quite a lot of legal responsibilities that they shouldn't be doing because they're not lawyers and could end up putting our city in a dangerous position with our, with our law department. And so this more or less averts that by shifting that responsibility to offices that actually have that legal staff and that capacity, particularly at the state level, to deal with situations like that. And with that being said, I believe the next steps are, I would move to submit, to ask counselors to submit feedback to the chair in the, before the next Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee meeting on the current draft that we have in front of us. I would also move to ask HRC members, relevant city staff, and legal staff for feedback. I know that we have some residents here with us that potentially would want to speak on this. But I, I would be happy to hear from counselors first.
Counsel? Thank you very much, Counselor Sang. Counselor Scarpelli?
Thank you. Counsel Sang, thank you very much for all your hard work. This is, it's well done. I think that this is, this is needed. I think that we, we need to really, if I can, I think that I'll be making the recommendation for all of our future commissions that to make sure they're part of the membership appointment and removal organization. There's a section in there that says the, that the members have to be residents of the city of Medford to make sure that that is spelt out. And, and then the other piece is the independent resources. I think it's a slippery slope when we say that we provide adequate funding to retain its own council. This just, it just leads away from something that I'm fearing that we're still not really going all in with the city solicitor. I think if we put city with, you know, the council with partnership with the city solicitor or their designee, I think providing funding differently opens up another concern that we hear over and over again is, in the community, is where, where is all of our legal money going? And what we're seeing, even with our warrants, it's more than, more close, for what I've counted so far, it's over $400,000. So I just want to make sure we keep a tight leash on that if we can. But thank you for all your hard work.
Counselor Sang?
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli, for your kind comments. I, would I actually agree with that point? I think that's a good note. I'd be happy to make that amendment. Of course, there's, you know, we have a lot of time to do this as well, but I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Counsel Callahan?
I apologize. I've been looking for this as a document. Do we have this, was this sent to us? Or is, is it the one that's, oh, thank you so much. It's sitting right on the desk. Looking at electronic form. Thank you.
And an electronic copy of this document should be available in the meeting minutes of this, so that, that will be, that will be submitted. Any other discussion from counselors? Do we have a second on the motions made by Counselor Sang? Motions made by Counselor Sang, seconded by Counselor Lozaro. Do we have any? And before we vote on that, I'm going to open it up to public participation.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the motions?
Oh, they're on the, they're on the end of Counselor Sang's slide right there, so. Yeah, Clerk, would you be able to read them out?
What I have is the Counselor Sang, I combined it into one motion. As the Counselor Sang moved to submit feedback to the chair and Counselor Sang before the next meeting, and further moved to ask commission members, relevant city staff, and legal for feedback.
Thank you.
All right, if anybody would like to speak publicly on this matter, feel free to raise your hand on Zoom or step up to the podium if you're, if you're here in person. Go. Just say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jennifer Yacko. I live at 16 Monument Street in West Medford. I want to just support this. I'm so excited that you all are working on this, and I want to really thank Counselor Sang for his work on it. I think it's really important to have a vibrant Human Rights Commission, not just to deal with cases where people's, human rights have been violated, but looking at how, as a community, we can promote human rights and make sure that everyone in our community feels seen and respected. And we can engage, a vibrant Human Rights Commission could also engage the community in thinking about what human rights are and how we can really promote them. So I'm really excited, and I want to thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom seeing a hand from Munir Germanus? I'm going to ask you to unmute. Please say your name and address for the record, and yeah?
Hello, yes, Munir Germanus. I live at 3 Savage Road in Medford. I served several years at the Human Rights Commission, four of which I was chair of the commission. And I was aware of the difficulties that the current ordinance pretty much restricts or is unclear about the, the actual duties of the Human Rights Commission. And I am aware also of the difficulty of recruiting members and of achieving quorums in these meetings. And I am aware also of the difficulty of recruiting members and of achieving forums in these meetings. So I applaud Counselor Seng for this effort. And I think hopefully it will lead us to a more vibrant representative Human Rights Commission that participates actively in the city of Medford. Thank you all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. David Harris, I'm going to ask you to unmute and please state your name and address for the record once you're unmuted. Mr. Harris, you're, you're on mute. I'm asking you to unmute. There's a button on Zoom.
Okay, there it goes. I didn't know what I was doing. I apologize. I don't know what that was about. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to join you all tonight. I'm going to speak very briefly. And my name is David Harris. I live at 151 Sharon Street, West Medford, been there for 29 years. I'm a former chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I can't remember the exact years or for how long. But it was very important work for me and I really appreciated it and was glad to be able to serve the city. I wanted to start by saying I certainly endorse this, this, this effort. I think it's, it's long overdue and I want to commend Counselor Seng and, and those who worked on this, on crafting this. You know, and I, and as I thought about things to say today, I mean, I'm a old man, so I always have something to say, but you know, I, I have almost 50 years in race and justice work and over that time I've seen a lot of changes. And, and I think, you know, I, I do think that the current ordinance is somewhat outdated. I think it's, it's unfortunate and I, and I, and I think that my experience as chair was that it was in a way, we were, we were hamstrung. I, I think there were expectations of, of what we could or would do that were unrealistic and that we weren't able to do what we really felt we needed to do, which was to create a, an organization that could be, serve and be responsive to the needs and of the entire community of Medford. And, you know, as I thought about what to say today, I was looking back on my own career and, and there are two parts, there are two parts of my career. I started out in the Commission on Civil Rights in 1975. Now, at the time, there was a man named Arthur Fleming, who was the chair of the commission. Arthur Fleming was an Eisenhower Republican. And so for those of you who don't know what the Commission on Civil Rights was, it was a temporary agency created in the Eisenhower administration, which has still lasted, of course, it lasted for five years. It has no enforcement power. And Arthur Fleming used to always say to us that, that the power of the commission, which was a significant part of the fact finding that went into the civil rights passage of civil rights laws, was moral suasion. And he said, in the absence of enforcement power, it was really important that we marshal facts in ways and be able to talk about them in ways that could persuade those, even those who might be resistant, to embrace them. I also spent some time working at HUD, which is one of the most, which enforces Title VIII and the Fair Housing Act, which is one of the most powerful enforcement tools in the country. And I think, you know, when Counselor Seng talks about this, this, the old ordinance being kind of fixated on housing discrimination and that kind of thing. I, I think it, it holds us back from meeting the needs of the current residents. And so, you know, I, I don't want to go on and on, but I do, I do commend him and, and I, and I, and I encourage you all to embrace this conversation fully and I, and I look forward to the outcome and joining you again as you continue your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have anybody else from public? Matthew Page Lieberman, seeing your hand raised on Zoom, please, I'm going to ask you to unmute and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Matthew Page Lieberman, 15 Canal Street. While I, I do think this is a really good idea to revise the ordinance, from my observations of the commission, it's not, what's on paper is not going to address the, the, the critical, you know, issues that the commission continues to struggle with. I know from watching it that there was a process a while back where many commissioners were discovering what was in the actual ordinance. It was, it was a process and we were looking through it. And I know from watching meetings that there have been people on the commission, even officers, that have said during meetings, they don't know what the commission does. They don't, they don't really know what it's supposed to do. And so if, if people don't have best practices where, you know, when they start in the commission, they receive a de-ordinance, you know, where people talk to them about what a chair does, what a vice chair does, what the liaison's role is, then I don't really think this is going to address those core problems. One problem that I've definitely seen with many of our commissions is that you have liaisons making recommendations to the mayor of who to appoint. The liaison's role is just to facilitate, you know, tech stuff to make sure that, you know, meeting minutes are available, that Zoom is up. But I happen to know that there are liaisons that make decisions about who can serve on these commissions based on their personal prerogatives. And I think that that's something that really, really needs to be addressed before we can have commissions that are really effective. And in my experience also, I think that commissioners have to play a role in trying to be, you know, expansive, trying to figure out really what they can do and who they want on the commission, play a role in recruiting, in interviewing people and, and showing that kind of interest. And many of these commissions, I don't mean to pick on the human rights, although I know that this is a serious problem with the Human Rights Commission. This is the kind of stuff that, that, you know, we need to focus on. And I'll comment, you know, I can, I, but I'm saying like, that's the bigger thing that we all have to kind of have to figure out.
Thank you. Do we have any, any other comments from either counselors or members of the public? Okay. Matthew, I could see your hand is still raised on Zoom. Did you have something else you wanted to add or? Sorry, you seemed to have muted kind of suddenly, so I wasn't sure. Okay, well. So seeing no, well, seeing no further discussion. Clerk, would you be able to read off the motions by Counselor Seng and then we'll take a vote on it?
Counselor Seng will be speaking to the chair and Counselor Seng before the next meeting. And further move to ask commission members, relevant city staff and legal to keep that second.
Well, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counsel Callahan.
Yes.
Counsel Lozaro.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli, please. Counsel Seng.
Yes.
Yes, five of the affirmative, unposing, motion passes. 24073 offered by counselors Callahan, Seng and Lozaro, resolution to establish city council listening sessions. I understand that there are a few updates on this particular. Counselor Lozaro scheduled a listening session with the senior center and I believe Counselor Callahan mentioned that she wanted to have some further discussions about just hashing out what exactly those listening sessions would look like. So do we have any, do we have any counselors who want to talk about this? Counselor Lozaro.
I thought it would be in an effort to start things moving, we don't have to keep this appointment, but I thought I would speak to Pam at the Council on Aging and who is at the senior center every day to just see if we could get a meeting on the books that when there are a million activities there every day. So I thought we would, could try to find a time when it's not too busy, there's availability at the center. We wouldn't be able to go as a large group of counselors because it would be a forum and we would obviously be discussing something of interest to, you know, the things that we talk about during our meetings. So we would have to just be like one or two counselors. And we could talk about this more, but I imagine we would just sort of hear out folks' thoughts and then bring that back to our meetings, either hearing committee or regular meetings. But the date that she and I talked about was May 31st, it's a Friday at about 10 o'clock. But again, just for the sake of getting something scheduled and then we can kind of go from there, either reschedule it or see if we want to move forward with that time. I did meet with Pam and talk about, you know, if that would be something that was of interest to people at the senior center and my thinking being that if we, if we kind of start with something like the senior center and maybe the library, knowing that those spaces are already fully open to the public, anybody from Medford can come at any point. And there aren't any there from my perspective, there aren't any major barriers to people accessing those spaces. It obviously isn't available for every single person in Medford, but we know that they, you don't have to like pay a fee, you don't have to be a member, you just come. So if we make ourselves available to at least a couple of places to begin with, then we can get started sooner rather than later. And I thought that was a, a good place to begin.
Yeah, and I fully agree with the sentiment that, you know, it's important with public outreach and public engagement to get things moving, you know, as soon as we can and earlier. So one thing that I have kind of been wondering just about the logistics of of open meeting law is that, do you think that if there's say like two counselors on one side of the room and just depending on the layout of the room, like one counselor in another room, talking to a different group of people with that? No?
I don't know, but I would think no. I think the, the better attitude would be for one or two counselors to just mostly record. It being a listening session, it's not, the attitude isn't really to be, to be debating things necessarily. It would just be to say, what do you, what do you care about? What do you want me to know? What do you want me to share with the rest of the council? Rather than saying like, this is what I think and this is what we're, this is what I want to do. Right? Because then it's not a listening session anyway. So it's, it's more like collecting the information and then relaying it to the rest of the group when we're in open meetings. And, and then we could talk about it more thoroughly. That's my thinking anyway.
Counselor Callahan and then Counselor Seng.
Would you like Counselor Seng go first?
Oh, Counselor Seng.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I would agree with Counsel Lozaro. I think that's the point of the listening sessions, although I think there's back and forth is natural. I think the point of it should be to listen. And, you know, if there is something that we can help clarify, because sometimes, you know, we're, you know, residents want us to do something that we're already doing. I think that's fair game for us to say, oh, like here's, here's this, here's this thing that we're doing, here's how you get plugged in. These are, we're holding a meeting about this on, you know, Main 8, for example. I think that's fair. But I, yeah, I, I would think the main part of it is just to note down what folks are saying and asking and then bring it back to this group or to the city council regular meeting as a whole. Yeah, I, I would say by record, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say we should record with a camera or recorder because that may scare some people away, but we should definitely have at least one counselor jotting down the notes to bring back.
Thank you, Counselor Callahan.
So I think just for logistics, we, two things. Number one is that we should not have more than two counselors at each one of these. We should just decide that that is what we're going to do because I think it's impossible to ensure that some policy that is upcoming won't be discussed. Like that's just the nature of these things. And so I think we should just decide no more than two counselors. And then the question is, how do we make those decisions from a logistical standpoint? The other question that I have is, and I know that we, I was the one who proposed that we have a subcommittee. That subcommittee has not met yet. Given that there is a subcommittee, even any two of us on that subcommittee cannot appear at the listening session. So I'm wondering if perhaps we, given that there's already a listening session later this month, that perhaps tonight we should disband the subcommittee. Even though it would be nice to have a subcommittee to discuss this, I think it might be more in the way, given open meeting law, then it will help and maybe we just have these discussions here. So I will make that as a motion, but I would love to discuss it. I'm not, you know, for sure that that is the right way to do things.
On the motion of, well, first off, do we have a second on the motion of Counselor Callahan?
To disband the subcommittee.
To disband the subcommittee that we established last meeting.
Yeah.
Second by Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Seng.
Um, I, so I, I was also thinking about that Counselor Callahan and I have a different proposal. I still think it could be valuable to have a subcommittee to help organize these things and to, you know, after, for example, after the senior center listening session, to have a subcommittee meeting to quickly review what went right, what went wrong, what are best practices, what, what should we do next time? And so I almost think it'd be more useful to have, to keep that subcommittee, but to have meetings organized where out of the two counselors who are there, one of them is a member of the subcommittee and one of them isn't. And that way you have basically a sub, subcommittee liaison who can help organize and, you know, come back to the subcommittee and say, okay, this went right at the session, this went wrong. Handle emergencies that way and one, you know, other counselor invited.
Counsel Scarpelli.
So the previous resolution that I voted no on and I'll probably vote no on this. We're making decisions where usually in the past, I know that this council here and today, I'm the only one that's actually been part of a council with the city solicitor sees the importance of that answer. And I know my fellow counselors don't believe in spending money with KP Law, so requesting any, any questions to go their way, I, I, I think, I feel reluctant, reluctant to, to vote on anything without understanding legal ramifications or what we should be directed by legal counsel. I mean, we could, we can talk all we want until we find ourselves in a tricky situation where we're then called on the carpet. And then because of those situations, we're then brought to court for legal issues and then it's blown up 30-fold like the BJ situation a few years back. So again, I, I would in the past have recommended to get legal counsel, but that's not the privy of this council anymore. So just wanted to share my two cents with this. Thank you.
Counselor, Counsel Callahan and then Counselor Seng.
Through the chair, I would be super interested in understanding if there are any specific questions, what exactly would be asked of legal counsel?
Counsel Scarpelli, do you have a whatever comes to mind? Counsel Seng.
Thank you. I think with regards to legal questions, I think oftentimes Counselor Scarpelli and I have very similar questions. In this case, I would disagree because I think as long as we're playing it safe, there should be no question about the legality of any, any of this. This, this is something that happens. You know, it is innovative for Medford, but it isn't something that has, is unheard of. This, and essentially again, as we, as long as we play it safe with open meeting law, we make sure that, you know, no two members out of a subcommittee, no three members of a regular committee and no four members of the city council are meeting, you know. I think we should be all right. And I think the two figure then is very, very safe.
Counsel Callahan.
I would like to withdraw, withdraw my previous motion and make a different motion.
Motion withdrawn. What is your, what is the new? Motion withdrawn. What is your, what is the new motion?
Um, my new motion is that the Chair of Resident Services Committee will appoint which one or two City Counselors would attend each listening session based upon their availability.
Okay, motion from Counsel Callahan to let the, uh, Chair of the Resident Service, or sorry, was that the Chair of Resident Service? Okay. The Chair of the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee appoint counselors to attend these listening sessions based upon their, one or two of them based on their availability. Do we have a second on that motion? Second by Counsel Lozaro. Any, any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counsel Lozaro.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Seng.
Yes.
Yes, for in the affirmative, one opposing, motion passes. All right. So let's see, are there any other? Yep. Counsel Callahan. Okay. Yep. Um, let's see. Is there, so I guess that would be you, me or Counsel Seng? Uh, I could, I, let's see, I'm, I'm just trying to think of which ones that I have the contact information for. I could, I could reach out to some of the community liaisons, but obviously if other folks would like to do that as well, you, um, you know, I'd be perfectly free to. Okay, okay. So we'll set up a subcommittee to figure that out. And, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but do you, I mean, do you think that we need to vote officially on saying this is the listening session at this time at the Senior Center?
I think that we should.
Okay, we, we should.
I think that we should.
Okay.
Motion to begin listening sessions with May 31st at the Senior Center at 10 a.m.
Okay, motion by Counselor Lozaro. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Callahan to establish a listening session, May 31st at 10 a.m. at the Senior Center. Uh, Clerk, will you please call the roll? When you're ready.
Counsel Callahan.
Yes.
Counsel Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counsel Seng.
Yes.
Yes, for in the affirmative, one opposing, motion passes. Do we have any public participation? Any members of the public would like to speak? Just kind of looking at Zoom. Yep, uh, Matthew Page Lieberman asking to unmute. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Matthew Page Lieberman, 15 Canal Street. I'm at the, uh, new, uh, portal that we have for, you know, the resolutions and everything. And I was wondering if the draft resolution for, you know, the HRC reboot or, um, remodeling would be uploaded to there or when it should be expected? Because I mean, I don't, I don't see how I can get a copy of the draft to look over.
Yeah, I, so I apologize if that wasn't, uh, included in the agenda itself. There were just some late submissions, but I did verify with the clerk that we could still hold the meeting as long as it's in the meeting minutes. So the.
That's fine. I, that's fine. I just wanted to know where I could see a copy. That's all.
Oh, um, the, the meeting minutes are posted on the Civic Clerk website, right? With the agenda packets? Okay, uh, yeah, they should be, uh, they should be posted on the Civic Clerk website along with the agenda materials after approval by the council.
Okay.
Yep, so.
And then, and then people can still send in comments.
Uh, yes, yes, you're more, more free to send in comments. We didn't actually vote on anything, um, uh, related to that tonight.
That's all good. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And it looks like all the public comments that we have, do we have any, any motions on the floor? Counsel, Counsel Callahan, motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Lozaro. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Callahan.
Yes.
Counsel Lozaro.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli. Yes. Counsel Seng.
Yes, five to zero. Oh, oh, sorry. I am so sorry. I'm so sorry about that. So that was, that was a yes, correct? Counsel Seng, I.
Yes, that was a yes.
Five to zero, motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining.